So policies are not even considered.
They're really pounded. All right, all right. I'm still pounding, just to get everybody to... I know it's really fun to be in the library. So we're all full of excitement, but I am calling this public hearing to order and welcome you all to this meeting on February 20th. So, manager, I'm going to turn this over to you initially, or nope, maybe not. Yes. No? You want me just to...
I'm helpful. I'll introduce the topic.
It says on my little program here, "Manager introduces topic."
I will do that.
Thank you.
Yes. This first public hearing is on an ordinance adopting hazardous substance user fees, and the purpose of this item is to conduct a public hearing on an ordinance for the hazardous substance user fees for fiscal year 2019, based on the toxic board's recommendation of $65.43 per full-time equivalent employee, up to $2,000 per entity. In accordance with the Eugene City Charter and City Code, all costs of running the Eugene Toxicous Right to Know program must be covered by fees assessed to manufacturers in Eugene that are hazardous substance users.
Okay, thank you very much, and I do not believe we have anyone signed up to testify on this public hearing. So that closes the public hearing. Do I have to gavel when I do that? And any questions or comments from council? And because we do not have a full quorum tonight, Councilor Zalinka is going, we cannot vote on this. We cannot take action tonight.
We don't have a quorum, one, two, three?
We have a quorum, but we have to have unanimous consent. So we're missing one, councilor. Councilor Zalinka is at the Fairmount Neighborhood Association meeting tonight.
So we would anticipate bringing this back on the 26th of February.
We've heard it, we've had the public hearing, that will be a quick matter of business on the 26th. And we have everyone.
Yes.
Okay. And now for the second public hearing.
And this public hearing is on the withdrawal of annexed properties from special districts, and the purpose of this public hearing is to hear any comments on the proposed withdrawal of annexed properties from special service districts. These withdrawals come before the council on an annual basis, and this year the batch contains 12 annexations approved by the city council in 2017, for a total of 14 tax lots and a portion of River Road between Horn Lane and Mary Lane. Timing for adoption of the ordinance is critical. State statutes provide that any properties to be withdrawn must be approved by March 31st of this year. Otherwise, these properties will remain on the tax rolls of special service districts for an additional year, and council action is also scheduled for February 26th.
Okay, thank you, and I understand again that there is no one signed up to testify in this public hearing. Are there any comments from councilors on this matter? Councilor Clark?
We have this scheduled for action on the 26th, Monday night, during the regular council meeting and not during the work session.
Correct.
All right. That's what I want to know. Thank you very much.
All right, great. So with that, so you're looking at me in a physical way. Just trying to read that. So that ends the public hearing. And so I'll close the public hearing. Thank you all for listening to that non-event. And now we are opening the work session, and we... Manager, I will turn it over to you again.
Thank you, Mayor, and Kristi and David will come on up and make a presentation on this particular topic. Just as a brief few comments, you might know that over the last many months, in a couple of different conversations through Budget Committee as well as other conversations, we've talked about wanting to collect and bring forward to you information about our entire community justice system for you to start thinking about, and then eventually, over a series of conversations, give the council options on what you'd like to do with that. And so this is really the first of this particular type of conversation. And so Kristi and David, I'll turn it over to you to take us.
Thanks, John. Mayor, council, David and I are here tonight to, as John said, to provide you with an overview and an update. Today is in the first in a series of discussion we have planned with you regarding the status of our public safety system and paths for stabilizing the current system while planning for the future. As John mentioned, this is a continuation of the Budget Committee work that started in March of 2017, and at that point, we talked about coming back with a comprehensive analysis, and we've been working on that over the course of the last several months. Tomorrow, another critical component you will hear about is from Chief Zaludick, and he will be at your work session to talk about the fire and ambulance transport component of the system. We will provide you with the information we have available about the need for service, the capacity to deliver the service, and the gaps identified. We're not requesting you to take any specific action today, however, we do want to learn more about what you need to help inform strategies as we move forward. As stated on the slide, our local public safety system is stretched, and the effects are being felt by our community and our employees. Director James and I will cover the topics listed to the right portion of the slide to talk about what we've learned as we've assessed the system. As a framework, I want to share a bit more about the specific focus of today. Most people are familiar with the traditional criminal justice system. That includes the core components of the municipal system, police, municipal court, city prosecutor, but it also expands to our partners at Lane County and the state, Circuit Court, Lane County Adult Corrections, and the District Attorney's Office. Today's focus will focus on the core components of our system, which are police, city prosecutor, and the courts. Those are the services that are within the city's area of responsibility. So the public safety system delivers the critical day-to-day services and is also focused on what we refer to as community justice. When we talk about community justice, we are including programs that provide community solutions, that offer multiple paths at various contact points, that connect community members with needed services, support, and alternative resolutions. It is a system that moves away from a one-size-fits-all approach, and partners, including community members, working together to reduce the cycle of crime and improve the quality of life. It is a people-centric system, and core to its foundation is trust. Trust between the community members and the service providers is absolutely critical to have a successful system moving forward. We live in a great city. We have great parks and natural resources, a growing economy, thriving arts and culture, engaged neighborhoods, and committed community leaders. A foundational component of our great city is the public safety system, a system on which many of our community goals and aspirations depend on. No one component of the system can stand alone and reach its full potential, and when one of the core components is struggling to keep pace, the balance and success of the entire system is at risk. Council has had a safe community goal for a number of years. In fact, we tried to go back and figure out how long it's been. It's been so long, five, at least five, right?
2005.
2005, thank you, Councilor Pryor. So this longstanding goal has been reaffirmed by councils as a priority area many times over the last years, and recent polling efforts reflect that the public safety is a community priority as well, continually reflected in polling, city polling efforts. During the street bond polling efforts last year, 87% of the community members ranked public safety as their second highest priority. Most recently, we heard from community members during our police chief recruitment outreach process. When we asked them to finish the sentence, "I'm glad Eugene has a police force that..." we heard that, the quotes that are reflected on the slide. "A police force that adapts to the needs of the people, that are compassionate, that helps other people or stops crime, will listen, will protect the community and the people in it, protects all citizens, and is helping to keep our community safe." I personally have really enjoyed the outreach efforts around the police chief process. I've learned a great deal, not only about what the community expects, but I've also had an opportunity to connect with employees at the police department. One of the things that I've done, and I know you have, is the ride-alongs, and most... one that really stands out in my mind is the work that I... the opportunity that I had to do a ride-along at the 911 Communication Center. I learned so much about the stress on the system and just the high level of professionalism and the commitment to quality and to serving the community, and I would just encourage you, if you have a chance to do that, please take advantage. It's a great opportunity, and they would welcome the chance to show you more about what they do. Public safety is critical to our community, and as you know, it's a system that's been under pressure, and those pressures are the result of a number of impacts, both national and local. We've gone through, or we're moving through, I should say, the Great Recession. It's had a significant impact on our state and region, and it has been slow to return to economic stability. We've also experienced a growing population that results in needs for more service. And as you're well aware, homelessness has a significant impact on our community and our most vulnerable members of our community. You're familiar with the point-in-time count for homelessness, and a couple of data points that really impact our community in the way that we deliver service is the growing need of chronically homeless, and since from 2013 to 2017, 54... there's been a 54% increase in the chronically homeless. And during that same time period, 81% increase in chronically homeless without shelter. In addition, we have a higher number of community members in need of treatment services for mental illness and addiction. The need for system-wide approaches to create a growing need for community-based problem-solving approaches, which depends on building trusting relationships through ongoing dialogue and shared understanding of issues. As we will see today, all of these impacts, as well as other challenges, have resulted in a service system that has not kept pace with the need for service delivery. So in defining the problem, we sort of broke it out in a pretty simple way. It's not a simple problem, and it does not have simple solutions. However, we have tried to summarize it in relatively simple terms for today's presentation. Our community's growing needs are outpacing our capacity, resulting in critical gaps. These gaps are being seen and felt by our community, and there are a number of points where our services intersect and support each other. Tomorrow, you will hear more about how this looks for the fire and ambulance response services. Today, David and I will speak to the police and municipal court service. At this point, I'll turn it over to Director James.
Thank you, Kristi. Mayor and members of the council, it's a pleasure to have an opportunity to address you this evening and appreciate this opportunity. Simply, what we're going to do tonight is try to simply describe for you a complex reality regarding the challenges of responding to a steadily increasing police service demands as our community has grown and evolved over the past several years. The nature of what you're going to see, we're going to describe the steady population increase as well as demand for police services. We're going to describe how the static police response capacity. We'll talk about the gap between the needs of the community and police capacity to respond to those needs. We're going to take into consideration our outcomes that we have achieved through creatively allocating resources for targeted initiatives in partnership with other city departments. And certainly, we want to express our concern that community members are not receiving the quality of services we believe they deserve. And then we'll cite some desired outcome goals for this information. Let me just set the stage for the slides you're about to see. All the slides have been prepared with the... to be very simple, to look at information that we have been collecting through our computer-aided dispatch system, report management system, since we have had a full year's worth of information. This system was put in place in October 2013. We're going to be looking at a comparison between 2014 all the way through 2017. Occasionally, you'll see to the right side of the slide, a percentage increase. That's the percentage change from 2014 to 2017, and occasionally, I'll be describing some of those changes intermittently as we go through there. Our first slide reflects our population. So so you understand, 14, 15, and 16, those are the actual reported figures that the U.S. Census Bureau has. The 2017 figure is one that's based upon an estimate by the Portland State University Certified Population Forecast, and we got that from our Planning and Development Department. You may have seen that figure before. So over the past four years, we've had basically a 4% increase in our population. As we know that the population that is measured by the census doesn't include all the individuals who we serve. It certainly doesn't include the University of Oregon students who did not have a Eugene address during the 2010 census. It does not count individuals who reside in the city and do not have addresses. And a large population of non-residents that live in the unincorporated areas of Lane County adjacent and around the city of Eugene, such as the Hannah-Clara area, that has an estimated population of 50,000 people who come into our city every day for services, but they do not reside here or not count in our population. So we've had the 4% increase. That's about a little over 1% increase a year, and we'll note as we go through that that will come up again. Our next slide, this is just stating the obvious. We have a static personnel staffing issue. Our budget's warrant officers remain at 190. We had 193 in 14 and 15. We actually reduced a position in order to create another position, a civilian position, and that's the way the department's been dealing with necessity for other positions in the department. We've been taking away from the sworn in order to make civilian positions. They service well, but we are decreasing our first responder, police first responders. The second line at the bottom there, our 911 Communication Center has extremely hard-working people dedicated to their job, and they haven't had any increase. And as we see through the slides you're going to see tonight, we'll try to describe to you the kind of stress that puts on our system. This is a comparison of the ratio of officers to 1,000 population. So, and I'm going to explain this to you a little further. It depicts the ratio of officers per capita depicting a very small decrease over the past four years. However, a 100th decimal place can translate to several sworn officers. Assuming our population stays the same in 2018, adding one officer would increase the ratio of 1.14 officers per 1,000 to 1.15, or almost 1.16. The reason I want to point that out to you, this is a national standard, just used to try to look at comparing law enforcement staffing in communities. And so those numbers, though, look small, let me give you some examples of what they really mean. Let's assume the population continues to grow at the average growth rate over the past few years, which is a little over 1%. Our population will be around 175,600 by the year 2022. In order for the police department to grow proportionately at that same rate over the next five years, in order to maintain the current ratio of 1.14 officers per 1,000, the police department would have to add nine officers over the next five years. This would only help maintain the same service levels that we have today. Let's assume that we set a goal to increase the ratio from 1.14 officers per 1,000 to 1.2 officers per 1,000 for 2018, the very year we're in. At the current growth rate, that would equate to an increase in sworn staffing from 192 officers, which we currently have in 2017, to 204 officers for 2018. Of course, that level of additional staffing would not be achievable, yet we remain challenged to increase staffing over the next few years. As a note, many agencies nationally attempt to have a 1.5 officers per 1,000. Now, that's really not a realistic goal for Eugene. More realistically, in the future, a goal we might shoot for would be 1.25 officers per 1,000, and that, those are real... those numbers look small, but they equate to real numbers, and it's a way for us to measure and within our organization, within the city of Eugene, our growth as our population grows. That's the purpose of that measure. Let's get down to how our citizens are affected. This is how our citizens contact us, their public-initiated calls for service. When a citizen needs us, they pick up their phone, their cellphone, and they call us. Those calls come into our 911 Communication Center, and this displays for you the average, daily average, public-initiated calls for service. Those are all the calls that public calls in, and those calls are then dispatched to an officer or a unit. In 2014, we had about 183 daily calls for service that are publicly initiated. You can see the steady rise. In 2016, we were up to 220, and that's remained the same in 2017, 2017, but that's over a 20% increase in calls for, in public-initiated calls for service. It is a... it doesn't look like much, but that's 38 more calls every day that go through the dispatch system that get dispatched. But there's another story to tell that we'll tell you at the end of this presentation. Now let's look at the activity that's generated by the officers. These are activities that the officers are involved in, like a traffic stop, pedestrian stop, and officer observation of criminal activity. And these activities don't have any response time associated with them, but look at the dramatic decrease over the years. In 2014, officers on the street would initiate 121 on a daily average activity situations. Currently, that's only about 90.5 as we've come into 2017. That's a 25% decrease, so you can see the corresponding increase in our public-initiated calls and the decreasing officer activity. And you're going to see, and as we go through the presentation, other things that are taking the officers' time away. We attribute the significant decrease in officer-initiated activity to two factors. First, just the increasing calls for service demand. Secondly, the necessity to reallocate patrol officers, who we call first responders, first responder officers, to targeted initiatives designed to address acute problems that were becoming chronic in specific areas of the city. We did this in partnership with other city departments, with promising results in the targeted areas. Yet, the reallocation reduced the number of available police officers, sworn officers throughout the city, reducing overall service response capacity to the non-targeted areas, which is most of the city. So we'll return to this issue also as we come, go further through the presentation. Next, let's look at crime. I'm going to let you look at crime in three ways. We're going to look at violent crime, which we call persons crime, then we're going to look at property crime, and then we're going to look at what we call societal crime. Persons crimes, you'll see at the bottom of your slide, include homicide, rape, robbery, assault, sex offenses, family offenses, and kidnapping. What this slide depicts is, is that over a year's time, 1,000 people, and our population of those 1,000, there's 12.9 incidents a year of violent crime. That's increased to 15, about 15 in 2017 to 17, 18% increase. It's not a lot, but what happens is those particular crimes take a lot of time for us to address. The more crimes there are like that, we have to spend more time on those calls, and we are overall spending more time on calls, as you will see. And that's a concern. That's a rise in violent crime, and it is steady, and we hope it doesn't continue into 2018, but right now, we're not sure. The next thing we'll show is property crimes per 1,000 population by year. Now, property crimes are the burglary, larceny, that's theft, motor vehicle theft, arson, forgery, embezzlement, stolen property, vandalism, and extortion. We see a slide, we see property crime decrease is slightly decreasing, 6%. It's gone down about four offenses for, between 2014 and 2017. Notice we have a stabilization of that information around 2016, 2017, and that is probably a plateau that you'll see on several of the other slides, where things kind of stabilize at that point, but this is, but we think there's reasons for that, and we'll talk to them. And the property crime decrease is not unusual these days, and even on a national scale, we're seeing a decrease in property crime. But we nationally believe and locally believe that the decrease can be attributed to underreported of such criminal activity rather than the actual decrease in the incident of property crime. Once again, it's not that property crime's gone down, we don't think as many people are reporting it. This concerns us, because this would indicate a loss of trust in our police to respond to those incidents and those types of calls for service. Again, we'll come back to this later in these slides. Then there's society crimes. And this, you can see there's quite a number of things associated with this. You'll see the very first one lists is weapon violations. So that's where there's a weapon present, but it hasn't been used in a criminal offense other than its presence being there. Prostitution, drug offenses, gambling, DUI, tobacco offenses, liquor. These are less important offenses in terms of how they're categorized in the criminal code. However, they're not less important to our citizens who experience them. And they also, many times, involve some of the people that are in our city who don't come up in our population count. We attribute the significant decrease in society crimes in 2016 and 17 to focused initiatives that the police department introduced in partnership with other city departments, including municipal courts, parks, fire, and our planning departments. This decrease is an indication that necessary reallocation of first responder resources produced promising results. The positive results in these targeted areas may have had an unintended negative impact on our police services in general throughout the community. So what happens when you call the police? Well, we have... what does that look like? Because police response time is one of those things that is a real judgment call for citizens in terms of how they feel about their police services. How long does it take an officer to get to me when I call them? The chart that you have before you depicts two things that have to do with response time. The lower element, which is in blue, is queue time. That is the time when the call taker and our communication center picks up that phone, receives the call, until the time that the call is dispatched to an officer unit. So, and if you look at this, there's something further telling. This has gone up by 19, almost 20 minutes in the past four years. And the reason for that is, we have more calls coming in, officers are spending more time on call, there's less officers available to respond to calls, and so what happens is, the call takers are looking at a screen that doesn't go away. Line after line after line after line. I'll talk more about that. The other aspect of response time is the actual travel time, and that defines the difference between the call is received by the officer and the unit until the first officer responds on scene, and so that time has only gone up about one and a half minutes over this period of time. So the bulk of our increase in our response time is how long it takes for us to actually be able to dispatch a call to an available unit. So what happens is, our officers are running from call to call, the calls are stacking up, because we can't get to them, there's less officers to answer the calls, we're spending more time on call. And so what occurs is, it used to, we took about 22 and a half minutes on average to get to a call, and that was everything for the most minor call to the most violent. Now, I'll tell you, when a violent crime comes up, we clear and we go. But many times, we have more important calls come up that we don't have anybody to respond to, and what does, the only thing that the dispatchers can do is say, is there any call available? Any car available? Any unit available who can respond to this call? And officers, when they hear it, well, they'll pipe right up and say, I'll clear, I'll get there, I'll quit writing my report, I will, I'll get there. And they try to get there as fast as they can. Today, that's 42 minutes total. That's gone from 22 and a half minutes to 42 minutes, on average, before an officer gets there. That's an 85% increase. And those people are waiting. And sometimes, it's not just one person. And sometimes it's not just one person, several people, because everybody is at the scene where that was called. They're all waiting, not just the person that picked up the phone. And this is the, what we worry about in terms of not offering the level of service. Our officers don't want that way, or certainly our communications people don't want that way. So what's happening to, I want to tell you about the story, Chris you mentioned about you doing a ride along in communications. I encourage you to do one with our officers and communications. I've spent some time in dispatch in my years, and I have a great deal of respect for what they do. What occurs is they've got calls they have to get out. Their screen is full. They go a page up, it's full. They go a page up, there's still calls there. Each one of those lines is a call. This is like having an end basket on your desk. And you take a piece of paper off, and somebody puts five pieces of paper on top of it. They can't do anything about it. There's no one to send. Can you imagine what that does to a person that whose job is to be the first contact for public safety services, and they can't send anybody? Our officers have those same screens in their squad cars. Our supervisors have those same screens in their squad cars. And there is an outcome that I'm going to show you in a minute from that, that the officers feel the same stress. They know they're out there. They know that when they get through with this one, they got to get through another one. That's not that way all day long, every day, but it's happening far too often. So how much time do officers actually spend on call? Well, this is the time from the officer that gets on scene, the first officer's there, until the, the last officer leaves the scene and clears it. We attribute the increase in time spent on calls, it's not a large amount of time, if you will, but we attribute this increase to the emphasis we've been placing on critical incident training and de-escalation techniques that emphasize patience and empathy. Also, we have an increase in person crime offenses, which by nature take a little longer to address and require more officers to respond. I just had the occasion to, riding patrol of the night, to go to a call where we had one of the people who has, does not have an address in the city, had burglarized the mailboxes at a special needs apartment, and then had gone across the street to the community center and, and had gone in there, broken into there, and was still there when we arrived on scene. What I witnessed was the actual practice of critical incident training and de-escalation techniques. Where I watched the officers go in, there's three officers on the scene that I could see, but I couldn't see the ones that were across the street who were attending to the burglary location. There was at least four officers on that scene. And I watched them patiently deal with a difficult individual who had a very long record of activity with us, sometimes not pleasant. His state of intoxication was so great that he wasn't a great deal of problems, but they handled it delicately, empathetically, and I was very proud of the work they did that night. But it takes time. And to do police work that way is the way that you want it. That's what 21st century policing encourages us to do, and you're all well on your way there. But that takes more time. This is the thing I don't want to tell you. It's the thing I must tell you. What happens is that as those calls stack up, sometimes those calls wait for three, four hours on lower level calls. There's a lot of things listed down there, but they can be everything from, we don't have anybody to send on a very low level call, but we have some information about a vehicle or an individual, and the dispatchers will actually just put out over the air, be on the lookout for, if you will, in a certain area, this is what we think they may have been involved in. They are lower level, again, fraud, drug information. But the same thing occurs, people want to see us. They want to at least have some disposition, if not see us, to have a disposition in some other way. But they keep stacking up. The field supervisors, the dispatch supervisors know we'll never get to those calls. Some citizens are informed that, well, why don't you call us back if you got to make a report? We don't, and some of them do, some of them don't. Some citizens are told to make property crime reports by going online. Some of them do, some of them don't. I actually had experience of one after the mayor's city address. They came up to me who'd made a report online after being burglarized and never heard another thing. So she's in her 80s. And she didn't have a problem with the police. Her father, her husband, who'd passed away, was a former Corvallis police officer. She didn't have a problem with the police, she had a problem with service. And she wasn't mad, she was disappointed. So was I. There's not a police officer in this room disappointed to hear that, or any dispatcher in this room, or communication person in this room that isn't disappointed in that. And, and I talked her through that, but I couldn't make a difference at that point. There's other stories. But this is one that is not, is difficult to tell because those numbers increased 36, 37% over four years. But got to look at that little note up in the corner. It represents over 34% of all of our public initiated calls. Let's put them together. That's the slide you saw earlier. So what you see is, is that 59 calls we were unable to respond to out of the 183. That's over 30%. That's 32% of the calls we were unable to respond to in 2014 on a daily average. By 2017, 80 on a daily average of the 220. We can't get there. That's sopering for me. So what are our desired outcomes? It's going to take time, it's going to take some planning, it's commitment to resources. But it's time to right-size our first responder and communication staffing levels. We want to reduce police response time. We want to reduce the incidence of criminal and social disorder activity. We want to build community trust in our police services, and we want to contribute to the improved quality of life for our community members. I'm going to pass it off to Chris.
Thank you, David. So next, we're going to talk a little bit about the municipal justice system, which is focused on the court, the jail, and give you some updates on some of the work that's been happening there. There's a extremely close relationship for the work of the police department and the prosecutor, and the system as a whole needs to keep pace with what the demands are. So this, this is a, a data point that talks, speaks to the case resolution goals. And as I've mentioned, resolving cases in a timely manner is critical to our court system and building and maintaining trust in that system. Timely justice is important to victims of crime who, who want to know that we've responded and followed through on their lives that have been impacted. And it is also important to those cited, both in terms of accountability and knowing that they will have timely access to justice. Faster resolution of cases means that they're faster past the solutions. And resolving cases at the first point of contact is something that we're striving for to help improve people's quality of life. In addition, expedited case resolution time also reduces the number of failure to appears. And I have a lot of data on the impact of failures to, failure to appear warrants and the cycling through the system that are a cost of capacity that increase the demands on the system, and they're continuing to cycle the same people through. The system partners have really worked proactively together to implement strategies to reduce the case resolution time. Progress in this area has required additional prosecution resources, and you've heard a lot about that in, during our budget discussions, and have made some adjustments that have really are demonstrated here in the results that we're receiving. The team remains committed to resolving cases at the first opportunity. And one of the first opportunities to do that is the first point of trial, arraignment, and ideally even before we get into the traditional system that we know. Our case goals are 60, 90 in one year. One year is, obviously, we want everything done by one year because that's a lot of time in a municipal justice system. Right now, we're making some really big improvement on the 60-day case resolution time from 34% to 65, and from 45 to 76 for 90 days. And we're just about there in reaching the one-year goal that we have. Should be noted on the bottom there that the community court has a 99% resolution rate. Again, that's a lot of contact, a lot of staying in front and helping people reach success. And then the mental health court also has a 93% resolution rate, which is outstanding. Another topic that has been a focus of discussion over the last couple of years is the jail bed space. We have 25 jail beds, 15 at Lang County and 10 at the city of Springfield. One of the key things to note on this chart is that in September of 2017, our partners at EPD and the city of Springfield worked really closely together to try to figure out a resolution for holding inmates pre-trial. What's, what happens is that we have, what the chart reflects is the municipal inmates released due to jail capacity limits. And as you can see, that the number was pretty high. So this, this chart shows from February 2017 to last month's June 18th, or June 2018. And what we've been noticing is there's been a steady decline. And since we've taken steps to hold those more serious offenders pending trial, we've continued to see a 40% drop from last February to January of this year. And that's very significant. And the reason that's significant is because, again, the cycle is, that requires David's staff to continue working with the same people. And what we want to do is reduce the rate in which people are recommitting crime. The gaps in the municipal justice court system are really increasing costs. We have jail beds, at Lang County, the cost for jail beds is going up 25%. So it's moving from about 117 a bed per day to around, somewhere around 147, 148. And we're working with them to try to figure out how we resolve that situation and maintain the level of beds that we have available. Attorney hours, as David talked to, as we move to systems that require more one-on-one contact with the people that we're trying to help and serve, there's a need for hours to go up. And so that's reflected in attorney hours also going up and trying to keep pace with the demands of the systems. We have hit a point where we've exhausted our resource capacity and are doing, just staying above water. If Judge Allen were here, he would say, we're right here, trying to reach our, to make sure that we can stay with the service and stabilizing the programs that we have. You'll see a slide in a little bit that reflects the need to stabilize these programs in the long term and speaks to their success. And the other demand on the system is this continuing need, growing need for treatment services. What we're finding is there are a lot of people with mental health-related issues. One of the things that we hear from the jail is, is that that is the highest need of the people that are being housed in the jail. And quite frankly, that's not necessarily the best path for them. They're, they're suggesting that maybe there's alternate ways to do sort of a secured housing situation where they can get treatment, and we might be able to do that at a lower cost and partner with others. So we've talked a lot about things that are maybe not working so well, but we have a lot of success to talk about too, as we've really looked for ways to improve the offerings to the, off the system, off the traditional system to a first point of resolution. This chart reflects some of the steps that we've taken since 2013. You'll see a lot of familiar things on this timeline. 2016 was a significant year, the CORT program, the community outreach team, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Park safety initiatives, community court, the parks block safety operation, cahoots expansion, and then other things that I don't need to go through the whole list. But we can tell is that there's been a great deal of investment in looking for new strategies to improve the system that we're, in the, in the community that we serve. One of those success stories is the community court. It's accountability with a helping hand, and many of you have had the chance to go and experience community court firsthand. What, some of the things that we're really proud of with that program is that there's a 91% rate of graduation, of, of the 91, 91% of the graduates from community court have no new charges in municipal court. I know that doesn't sound like a big deal. It's huge because the people that are going through the community court system generally have multiple arrests and multiple charges. This is really significant and changing the system as we know it. 79% of the graduates have no new offenses in the state of Oregon. We've had 638 walk-ins. Those are people that are not cited, but they're coming in because they're in need of service. And additionally, we have 1,000-plus hour volunteer hours that have been donated to help with this program. Honestly, we couldn't do this program without our volunteers. It's very, it's very resource-intensive, but it's producing positive results in the lives of people in our community. Another, oops, wow, we just went dark. So another program that you're pretty familiar with is the community outreach team, the court team. And I don't think that there's anybody that talks about this program better than Sergeant Smith. And we have a two-minute video that we're going to share with you that talks more about what she's accomplished and her team.
And they, they got some medical care from Occupy Medical and from Cigar Hard U D. And Matt said that their assessment was insane.
I think if you asked every single officer that got hired, why they wanted to become a police officer, it's because they want to help people. And sometimes when we are just responding to calls and we're just arresting and giving tickets, we don't really feel like that's really fulfilling and helping the person. Anyway, this way, the officers feel like they're actually having some significant change or offering something that is significant to this person's life and actually having them take step forwards in life.
What if we, what if we met you somewhere, somewhere else? Okay. I wouldn't want you over there anyway. That's not good for anybody. Our, our primary goal is to get housing for people. And I think, you know, it's a slow-moving machine, you know, where you feel like Sisyphus sometimes, you know, roll the stone up the hill and you get about halfway, and you feel like you're making some progress and down it rolls. Let's go back to the gooseberry, we'll give you a ride, and I'll, I'll talk to you about these programs all the way. But I think we make progress every single time we roll that stone up the hill. We go a little bit further. And I'm, I'm confident and optimistic that, that we are making a difference. I hear that from the people that we work with, that they're helped by it. Do you know what, there's an eyeglass program out of Rainbow Optics, and you can get a replacement frame.
It's not an overnight fix, but having that weekly interaction with them and seeing the improvement actually happen before our eyes and, and realizing that we're not arresting them. So when they see us, they come running over now and say, guess what? Guess what happened to me? I got a job. Or guess what? I'm, I'm next on the list for getting into housing. And those things are very fulfilling and enriching for us as police officers.
When I reached out to Sergeant Smith and asked for some information about how the program was going, she quickly provided me with six names of people. Blake, who had 69 arrests. Cindy, who had 12 arrests. Nathan, who had 25 arrests. Robin, who had 495 arrests. And those of you that have been to graduation might remember him. Jessica, who had two arrests, and Nathan, who had 29 arrests. Now, we're not talking about arrests that have taken over a long period of time. We're talking about a short period of time, a year, nine months. And it's a significant amount of churn on the system, right? So arresting, arresting and taking people to jail takes a significant amount of capacity out of our police service model. One of the things that Julie was really excited to share is what all these people have in common. And you heard it in the video, these people are housed. They're housed in different ways, but they have found their way to housing and treatment and really working to improve their lives. Only three arrests since, only, as the combined group, there have been only three arrests of the same group over the, since they've been working with them, which is about over the last year. Building relationships, you've heard David talk about the importance of building trust. And building relationships requires commitment, time, support, encouragement, and accountability. And this program really meets the mark and is doing an outstanding job. Okay. So one of, this slide I wanted to share with you is just a recognition of the continued commitment and strategic investments to address the needs of the community justice systems. systems. These investments primarily fall into three categories. Funding to support alternatives to the traditional criminal justice system adjudication model, and programs that connect people to services they need, such as community court, the expansion of cahoots, and homeless outreach program. So the homeless outreach program is, we're in a little bit of a transition from the community outreach program to the homeless outreach program. It's just a name, name shift. Additionally, it's funding to address the critical operational needs, such as reducing the backlog of cases that reduces the time from the time the case is filed with the court to the time of disposition. Providing funding for EPD bike patrol, communication center staffing, and providing resources for downtown activity that contribute towards increased public safety in the downtown area. The third investment is in the critical public safety and justice infrastructure, such as the 911 communication center equipment replacement, kind of an upgrade. Replacement of EPD radios, body-worn cameras, and other essential equipment that they need to do their jobs. And what you heard David talk about is, is that, I also will point out that the long-term court prosecutor needs, 250, is reflective of the decision and the direction that you provided to use the local marijuana tax dollars to help fund the needs in that system. One of the things that David said in his data is that we're trying a lot of strategies and now, and new approaches to keep the community safe. But ultimately, it isn't enough to keep the system from getting worse. We have to, what you'll notice up here is a lot of these times are one-time investments and strategies. And what we're learning is that a lot of these strategies are working. But while we work on new strategy, we also need to be mindful of what we need within our core system. And we need both of these to make, to help continue to keep the community safe over the long run. So again, back with the slide that talks about needs, capacity, and gaps. And David and I have talked a lot about what the needs are, the demands on the system, what the capacity limitations are, and what gaps are resulting from that. As we move forward, we need to keep our desired outcomes in the front, in front and center as we explore our options for fixing the problem. So based upon what we've learned, we've incorporated our original community justice initiative goals into what we've heard from police, and what we've heard from police, to find solutions that will stabilize our critical public safety functions and reduce pressure on our system. Broadly, these solutions need to support outcomes that focus on prevention, protection, and response. David talked about some of those and his desired goals and the work that they want to do. We want to prevent gaps in service by aligning our resources with our needs, engaging community in all of our efforts, and reducing the cycling through the systems by connecting people with the services that they need to change their lives. We want to protect and improve the quality of life in our community, and the community expects and deserves that by reducing crime that there will be, when it happens. And finally, we want to build trust by ensuring that we can and do respond when the community needs us most. So what's next? We recognize that we need, we know what we know today, and we've been able to put together a lot of data. And I actually want to give a shout-out to the staff that have really done a wonderful job of putting together information that helps us in sharing this information with you. What we know is that we need to go out, we need to listen to you, we need to listen to the community, to help inform where we go next. We'll take the information that we've gathered and integrate that into continuing to bring back a plan that reflects this feedback. After we have a chance to share what kinds of plans emerge from the discussions that we have, we'll come back, we'll listen, we'll reflect, we'll refine, we'll continue to work on the best strategies to move forward. And ultimately, we'll give you the opportunity to take action in resolving the issues as you see best fit for the community. The information and data shared today provide context with respect to the challenges impacting the public safety service delivery. In addition, we also provided an update on pilot programs and initiatives focused on providing off-ramps out of the traditional service system to provide alternative paths to community members ready to make a life change. As David said, we know our population's growing, we know we have increased need for service, the number of sworn staff per capita is below 2014 levels, the response to call, calls for service from the community is well below the standards that are acceptable for us and for our community. We have pilot programs that are proving to have a positive impact on the treatments, on providing treatment services, housing, and life skills for those ready to make a change. Please keep in mind that our system is multifaceted and requires ongoing communication with community and partners and working together to keep our communities safe. Today, we'd like to learn more about what additional information you need to help make decisions as we move forward and progress in the next steps. We look forward to hearing your input, and thank you for your time. I'll leave it on a really fun picture.
Thank you so much. That is an incredible body of work and an incredible report, very sobering, say, concerning lots of time, the lack of our capacity to do what we need. So we've substantiated a lot of things that we've heard about anecdotally, and now we have all of the data. So thank you, and thank you to staff for pulling that together. I have Counselor Evans in the queue. Anybody else? Counselor Prior, okay.
I'll echo the mayor's sentiments. I think this is an outstanding report. It's very comprehensive. Couple of things that jumped out at me. One was the 25% increase in the cost of jail beds. Over what period of time did that number go up?
So what's happened is, is that we had a contract, it was based on the housing of federal inmates. That, and...
CCC?
I'm assuming so. I'm not exactly sure. What I've been told by the jail is that they're no longer going to be contracting with federal government for housing of inmates. And so we, in our contract, it was aligned with whatever the rate was for that contract. And since that contract will no longer be in place, what we'll be doing is paying, really, the rate that it costs for them to run the jail per inmate. And so that's, that's where the 25% increase is coming from.
So where are the federal prisoners going?
You know, I don't have that information. I could get that for you.
Well, I mean, because, I've dealt with them in another professional capacity, so I'm just kind of curious. But the, and then the other thing is the gap between your, the call-response time that we're seeing and its effect on whether or not people are reporting property crimes. And is there, it's intuitive that that's, that it's a result of, you know, not being able to service those lower-level calls. Have you developed data to kind of show where those gaps are and how that particular phenomenon is affecting whether or not we're getting accurate crime-reporting statistics based on, you know, folks that are saying, you know, "My bike just got stolen. I know the cops can't do anything about it. They're not going to respond to it. I'll just let it go."
Well, I think most of the reason we believe this is we, is more anecdotal than what we can record in terms of fact. We don't know what we don't know. We don't know if somebody had a crime and they don't report it. People will, they give you some other anecdotes, two other situations. One where a citizen came out one morning and there was a number of cars in the street that had their windows broken out, a pretty common thing, criminal mischief. And there were two other, and so the citizens all come out looking at their, at their property. And one citizen says, "Don't bother to call, please, they won't come." Another citizen says, "Yes, call. If you don't call, they won't know. They don't know, they won't pay any attention to this." And so there was, so you had this debate in the street, all very calm, but one, "Don't call, they're not going to come." That's an anecdotal information, we just don't know. Another situation, actually with the same individual who had their son and daughter, something you may be familiar with, Mr. Evans, kind of the issues you had in your neighborhood, kind of very similar to that. His son and daughter were playing basketball out in the driveway one day in a house across the street, very problematic, the wrong kind of people coming in and out of there, a lot of suspicion of criminal activity centering out of that location. A car pulls up one day with all the children out there playing basketball, and a door opens and a female in the car calls the two children by name and tells them to get in the car. And so what happens is, is that the kids don't ask again what they said. As soon as they say it, they run in the house, good thing. The father comes home, calls the police, and it was during a busy call time, and we got there three days later.
Oh, that's not...
I wish I could tell you that, now, that wasn't a property crime, that was, that was more of a societal crime, but it kind of runs the same gamut. On a national basis, what we believe is that a lot of property crime is not being reported because we see more crime out there than what we are, are being reported to us, such as graffiti. We've had an increase in graffiti in the city. There've been some notable ones, some of the council members here are familiar with some of those cases. And fortunately, citizens are much more informed today, and they provide us a lot of information. And when they call, we can, we have people to follow that, track that, understand that, and we can work on it. But if we don't know it, the officers aren't doing as much proactive policing as they used to. It's all responsive, it's all response-driven. So they aren't going out there looking for these things. They are, but they don't have the real time to do that. When they have the time, they're going to do that. So I can't, that's a long answer. It's, we just, it's anecdotal, sir.
Okay, Counselor Prior.
Thank you. Great presentation, really very helpful for me. I'm trying to organize all this information in terms of how it kind of fits. And I talk a lot about, you know, condition and behavior and how we have to be compassionate to the condition, but we have to utilize enforcement around bad behavior. And it's not like they're two separate, discrete things, or like giant circles on the overlap. And a lot of what you talk about today is in that overlap area between condition and behavior. That's what community court, I think, really serves a great benefit in being able to take a lot of the conditional elements that have a behavior aspect to it. And I think that's why your recidivism rate is so low, is because you're able to really make a, an effective interaction within that overlap area, and I think that's, that's really important. But I want to get back, though, to this giant circle of behavioral-related aspects, because that's where your property crimes, your person crimes, your social crimes, those are all behaviors. If I steal, if I do drugs, if I do prostitution, if I do, that's all behaviors. And they may overlap with this, with the condition, but we need, as a, as a core service from the city, to be able to address behaviors that are not acceptable, whether it's downtown or anywhere else. And I recognize our efforts downtown have been very successful, but I'm beginning to hear more and more about the behavioral aspect in other parts of town, and how we need to have a behavior response system that's robust enough that it doesn't just handle downtown. We need to continue with that. But we also need to recognize that more and more of the behavior-related issues are moving out into other parts of town. As downtown becomes less hospitable, people just move. In my part of town, for example, we have a lot of natural areas and bike paths. And a lot of folks have now moved to the bike paths and the natural areas. And we need to be able to figure out what our behavior response is going to be there. And I, and I know I'm maybe talking triage at this point, but I think whatever we need to do to provide the level of support for that circle, I think is critically important. The overlap area is very important because that is an important area, but I think just in terms of pure behavior response, we need to look at what that, what that needs to look like. If community court can help in the overlap area, that's great. And even kind of move out into the, into the mainstream. But I think we need to look at how we need to respond, particularly with summer coming on, to what I suspect will be an increase in behavior-related problems that we'll need to address. And so I'm, I'm open to talk about whatever those solutions might need to look like.
Okay, Counselor Semple.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. It's very well done. My ward is downtown, and the police presence last summer helped quite a bit, but it's, it's not helped enough, and things are getting worse, and they're getting worse fast. I wrote a letter on Wednesday night. The only response I got was from Jennifer, thank you very much. But I did notice the next morning, there were two pairs of police officers downtown. And I had, I make my rounds, and I had reports from other people that there were more police officers, and that's helpful. But I've been saying for a year now, we need more police officers. I need them downtown, but not at the expense of the surrounding areas. So bottom line, how much is this going to cost for another 12 officers? How much do we need for the 911 center? Do we need more jail beds? If so, how much does this cost? Budget's coming up now. This is critical. I do not want officers on so much overtime. I want us to have enough response. And people will be surprised at this from my background, but it is a serious, serious problem. I need help downtown, and I don't want the rest of the city to pay for that. On this, the same line of thought over my last week, I talked to the red caps a lot, and they're effective, but they don't have enough. I suggested, would another pair help? They said, yes, yes, yes. Forty hours to train them. I need the money. We got, it's got to be one of the lightest, cheapest, quickest, funnest ways to look at this problem. Get at least two more red caps. Four would be better. We could have people down there in the evenings, Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, which are scary. So I want to know, how much for 12 more officers? Is that enough? How much for 911? Do we need more jail beds? I need this information for budget because we need to do something. And I really appreciate the response I've gotten from you, Chief, both to downtown, and I had some graffiti problems. And I was really impressed. So I got fast response times, but I want everyone to have adequate response times. Thank you.
Counselor Cyret.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Kristi and David, for this, I agree with the mayor, very sobering update, and really important data about our gaps. And I actually, Director James gave us a preview, a draft version of some of this data at Police Commission, which left me very troubled at how we allowed ourselves to end up with this kind of picture. But I, that can wait for another venue. And while the gaps are where we need to be focusing, our efforts, it's also really rewarding to see the effectiveness of these newer programs. The CORT program, which I understand is going to go through a name change, and the community court. Because of their effectiveness, as you pointed out in the data, of reducing recidivism among some of our most chronic offenders. So I would like to get more of a picture on how exactly, how cost-effective. So we're getting data about the outcomes for individuals and the lack of recidivism, but there's still a cost to running that program. And so how cost-effective is that compared to our more traditional approach of arrest, citation, and the cycle that, that we saw there? And the stats that you provided here about community court, Kristi, are those from the beginning of the effort?
Yes.
So the night, and then you had the note of the community court has a 99% resolution rate.
Yeah, we're in the, for the target area resolving cases, yeah.
And is that within 60 days, 90 days?
Ninety.
Okay. That's, that's, those are pretty effective things that we're seeing there. In terms of more information, you mentioned that Muni Court says, you know, we're right, we've done all our resource capacity, we're at capacity. I'd like to get more details about what that is, in terms of what that, those things that have reached capacity for Muni Court. And then, as one of my fellow counselors mentioned, I'd like more information about jail costs and possible options for securing additional beds or looking at, and this might be further down the road, but looking at programs that might be an alternative to incarceration. So those right now are the additional pieces of information that I'd be seeking. And then just, Counselor Semple, I read your email, and I didn't respond, partly because I didn't know how to respond. I didn't know how to respond. And just so you know, the city doesn't fund the red caps, they're funded through DEI, and they have no accountability to the city or the city council. So I don't know that we would send money to that, to be funded, but that's also a topic for another day.
Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you both for a shocking report, but I have to say, I'm not very shocked. It's shocking to hear those things. I didn't find them surprising. If anything, I, based on what I've heard, I think you undersold it a little bit. I think that there are issues that we need to address, that we could have spent even more time, obviously. So it's, as a good, it was a good first presentation to our ongoing opportunity to find some solutions here. That part's good. So if I'm answering the question, what do I need more when it comes time for decision-making, right? That's going to come from my perspective. I'm going to want to know more about clear path to better outcomes, to better resolution. And I guess I'm, I'm not a professional police officer, I'm not a professional police personnel of any kind, and there are things that I don't know about the best way to organize a police effort, a police department. And I don't envy you, your work, sir, at all, to come in and see this and analyze and help, and I'm sure glad you're doing it, and I appreciate that. We're going to have, as I understand it, though, a new chief soon, and that person's going to have a full-time chief soon, and that person's going to have a lot that they are probably going to want to contribute in the way of strategy, and in the way of experience, and in the way of desire to organize personnel. I don't know how to do these things, as, I've never run a department, but it would occur to me that a part of that is senior personnel structures, and how you put the right people in the right places. I know when our manager came in, he did a little of that, and I think he did it great, you know? I think all of that went really well. So I imagine we're going to see some of that, and I think some of the strategy pieces, from my perspective, I'd like to be hearing from the new chief, who has a plan for how to implement those in that way, but I wonder about the sequencing of our effort here, and if we're not doing that in advance, or, I wonder if the manager might speak to the sequencing of that, so I can ask better questions.
I agree with you. I think a new chief will need to be, and will in fact be intimately involved in this conversation as we move forward. That person will, as they come on board, have a lot to learn about this and a lot of things, and I think they're going to need to come up to speed pretty quickly. I think part of what's important is, is the basic data won't change. And so the basic, here are the problems, here are the things that need to be addressed, here are the things that happen if we don't do anything about this, that I don't think changes. And so when a new chief comes on board, all the things that David has done, and Kristi have done, have helped define what it is that the outcomes we're trying to achieve, and here's what the gaps are with that. When a new chief comes on board, I agree, part of what they will need to do is help figure out what are the best strategies now to fill those gaps, and then they need to bring all of their experience to the table to help us do that. And so I think, from a sequencing standpoint, what we're trying to do right now is describe the issue, describe the current realities, describe the gaps, and describe, and try to agree on what are the outcomes we're trying to achieve, and then the new chief comes on board to help create the strategies to close those gaps.
Out of curiosity, why did county stop the federal contract?
Actually, I think it was the federal government that made that decision.
Really? Do you know why?
I don't, I'll give more details, I'm kind of lacking details, and responses to some of the questions I've had tonight about that, so I'll get you guys, I'll get you all more information.
Thank you for that, and again, thank you for your report. I'll look forward to doing more work on this.
Councilor Taylor.
Thank you. I just have a question about, one question, I think. Have you talked to the police officers about their ideas about what should be done?
Well, at this point, we've been doing the data analysis. The officers are fairly open about sharing their thoughts about what needs to be done. If I had to categorize it for you, is first and foremost, to get more officers, to stabilize our patrol force, get enough officers in there to handle our response time, and cover that gap between our service demands, and be able to respond with enough people. There's, and our officers recognize the need to do these special initiatives, but when we pull those officers out of patrol, do those initiatives, they're very effective, but that reduces our response capacity in the rest of the city. Well, the answer is not to just take those people away from those special initiatives, because we're still going to have the gap. We need to close that gap with the plan that I think our new police chief will have an opportunity, given this presentation is the first step, to look at what additional resources are needed, so that the short answer is, our officers think they need more officers. And based upon what I can see, I agree with them.
I wonder if they might have ideas about better ways to use the resources you currently have.
Yes, they probably do, and that is something that we would want to look into, and I'm sure, based upon what I know of our candidates that are coming into this position, that are competing for this position, I believe they'll do exactly that, and that's what I would do if I was remaining.
I would hope that people are talking to all the police officers now, or giving them a chance to express their opinion. I realize you need more personnel, but there may be other things to, they may have other ideas.
We always want to explore our ability to manage those resources appropriately, and I know that's something that the new chief will be interested in doing, and I will be having this discussion, hopefully, the rangers, we will be able to range, so I can have time to discuss this with the new chief when they come on.
Thank you.
Councilor Evans, did you have a second round?
Yeah, another question. I see the stats, and I agree, I think that we're going to definitely need to have more police officers, more capacity in our call center. But I am a little bit reticent about more jail beds, and the reason why is because I think that we have, in this community, more mental health issues that could be solved with, or at least addressed by more capacity in that system. And I know that's, we're bleeding over into the state and the county, but I think it's worth having the conversation at the legislative level with our intergovernmental partners about how we provide more of that capacity, because this is a problem all up and down the West Coast. And it's not just about homelessness. What it's about are people who have not had adequate mental health service, because 25 years ago, the state started closing mental health facilities, and thus pushing those people out of the streets. So what we have is a mental health crisis that has turned into, to some degree, a criminal crisis. And what I think that we need to do is try to be able to work in a better and more coordinated fashion with our folks at the state level and the county, to be able to address some of those gaps there, because I would venture to say that buying more jail beds, or creating more jail beds, is not going to get us where we want to be. And most municipal crimes don't reach the level of, you know, incarceration to begin with, anyway. We're talking about people who commit felonies that we want to put in jail beds, not somebody that's, you know, swearing at somebody on the street, and, you know, public urination, or whatever the case may be, and you take an officer out of service for four hours to go address that, as opposed to a more serious level crime. So I'm just, I'm just curious, in terms of what your view is, in terms of those dynamics between what we need in jail beds versus what we really need, in my opinion, in terms of mental health response and facilities, because we don't have very many mental health beds, a lot less than we do jail beds in this town.
Councilor, you bring up really important points about working with our partners, and that's what we've been trying to do. So I mentioned, I think, during the presentation, that we've contracted with Eco Northwest. Eco Northwest, initially, what they did is, we said, help us understand where we have leakages, if you will, within the system. Where are people falling out of the system? Where are they getting in that cycle of reoffending, failing to appear, and kind of spiraling in a downward way? And so we've done some analysis on that. They've also done some analysis on the failure to appear rate. What our next step is to take that information and build on it, to really understand the type of offenders that we have that are moving into the correction system, and what is the right course of action, what is the right path? And it could be that it's residential secured housing, and we want to do more analysis on that. In our conversations with the Lane County correction staff, one of the things that they have said is, is that our offenders have really serious needs. Many of them have mental health issues, and that's just really, quite frankly, that's not what the jail, our Lane County jail is set up to do. And so I think we could learn a lot, continuing to work with them, and so we think there's another level of analysis that needs to be done to really understand the type of housing that we need. And I agree, working with our partners will be really important.
Councilor Yeh.
Yeah, thank you, it was an excellent presentation, and yeah, Claire and I got the short version, but this one's even better and much more, you know, refined. So this Listen, Inform, Plan, Reflect, Act, I assume that includes community outreach? So what kind of a timeline is realistic from listen to act?
Well, I think that, you know, there's been a lot of work done on community engagement and outreach, and we've seen some real success stories in helping making sure the city is getting, you all are getting the best information from the community to understand how to proceed. What we would foresee is, is that it'll be multiple touchpoints with the community, especially the marginalized communities, people that we don't generally hear from. I think it's going to be really important that our outreach and engagement includes that. We'd expect that as we work to kind of get you more information and continue down this path, it will take a while to gather that information and actually do this right, so that we make sure that the decisions that we're bringing forward, or the options that we're bringing forward, reflect community priorities as well. And so we haven't built a timeline around that. I would imagine that when we come back, we'll have a better sense of what that timeline looks like, but I can tell you that our intent is to be really thoughtful, and make sure we take our time to talk to a lot of people across the community.
And just to build on that, it's also, there's some sense of urgency, and so we recognize that as well, and have recognized that, and so I think it's that balance between urgency and engagement, so we want to do both of those well. And so I think the next time we come back and have a conversation, we can be more specific about what that actually looks like on both sides of that.
Kind of building off what Emily said, how realistic is it that we're going to have something actionable by the budget cycle? Because that's very, very soon, and this sounds like we're talking about a very long process.
I think the, so I would take it in a couple of different steps. So March 5th, we have a budget committee meeting, and we'll sort of update forecasts and talk a little bit about our approach for the budget. What we do know is, is that, as we've come off the recession, the worst that's occurred since the 1930s, we kind of had that post-recession, we haven't, not only as a community, but as jurisdictions across the country, really fully recovered from the fiscal impacts of that. So there's not a lot of extra money just to put forward. If there was, we would love to do that. And as you suggest, this is not just a couple hundred thousand dollar solution. This is, to do this well, it's multiple millions of ongoing dollars to really get to the capacity, which I think what we would say we need to be for the whole system. It's police officers, it's 911 dispatchers, it's municipal court support, it's making sure that the programs that have been successful, that we've had to use one-time money, that we actually make them as an ongoing piece, whether it's community court and those kinds of things. And so to have the ability to spend multiple millions of dollars by budget, I would say not, that would be really tough. I think to try to do a few things here and there, to make sure we keep going without trying to create too much more of a gap, yeah, we need to think about that, and then I think we need to seriously think about, what is the community willing to invest in in the long term for added capacity to really fill these gaps?
Right, I expect that we're talking about other funding sources that are not currently part of our package.
I don't know what the right funding source or the financial mechanism for it is, and I think that's a part of the conversation that will have to go forward, and, you know, there's multiple ways to kind of think through that, and so I think all of that has to be a part of the conversation.
Okay. Councilor Pryor.
Yeah, I would reinforce that. I think we have to think both in terms of short-term and long-term, and there is a sense of urgency, so we have to think what might be some short-term things we can do, recognizing that they don't have a long-term potential, but they buy us the time to get to the long-term solutions. And what Councilor Evans was talking about, I think, is very on point, because it speaks directly to the people who are in that overlap area, particularly mental health problems. Their condition of chronic homelessness is also affecting their behavior, and I think that's where, in addition to a community court, they also have mental health court, drug court, veterans court, youth court, and all of these can be very effective at dealing with the behavioral issues around people with a conditional problem. And I just have to give credit to our police officers who have to operate in that overlap area, because not only do they have to be behavior responders, they also have to be, to some degree, condition responders. And we saw that in the video up here. These officers were not only responding to behavioral, they were also responding to conditional, and to try to balance those two is just amazing, and it's a reflection of the good training that our officers have, that they're able to carry on in that overlap area as effectively as they do. But I think we need to consider our funding options in terms of how they can be effective at both parts within that overlap area, because I think our chronic population is one that creates a lot of indigestion, but doesn't have a simple response. It really is a two-part overlapping response, and so I think you're absolutely right on with what we have to do.
So I want to finish on time, and I just wanted to kind of frame this for myself out loud, that I'm getting this, and the framework that, you know, that I'm assuming we're heading towards in our next conversations with you all and beyond, is a kind of connecting the dots between how we, how we provide this sort of mix, answer this mix of needs, what that sequence is in that mix of needs, so that we're tipping the balance more towards officer-initiated, sort of seeing what's happening in the community, as opposed to a complaint-driven response system that we can't keep up with, right? That that's sort of where we're going, is that we're, we have a robust enough system, and a diversified enough staff and set of resources that we can initiate and be a presence in the community, so that we're targeting what we're doing, as opposed to being complaint-driven. And so with that summary, what I will be interested to piggyback on what Councilor Cyret said, is I'm interested in those opportunity costs or the costs. Like, how do you compare, if you invest more in this way versus that way, you know, so what do you get, what does that menu look like, so that there's some way of sort of understanding in a larger context, we could spend this much in two years, and we could spend this much more in the next two years, and, you know, what that would look like? So I'm...
Mayor, I'd just say yes to the first part, but I think there's additional pieces that sort of attach to that, so officer-initiated calls is one piece of that. Just response time in and of itself is an important piece, some of which are not officer-initiated, and so there is just, when somebody calls, the officer shows up in the time that meets an expectation for the community. So I think there's, there's a couple of pieces that we're trying to...
But I'm just thinking that just from my exposure to this, that officer time that is spent responding to complaints about homeless activity, that if we had a different patrolling process, would reduce those calls and then officers would be freer and have a shorter response time on other things. And so it's that, seeing that balance, to me, you know, we're investing here because then we'll get that interest in it. So everybody satisfied? Thank you very much for that really excellent report and very interesting food for thoughts. We look forward to the next round. And we are adjourned.